About two, two years ago, I was with my son. And his tent kept looking like it was ninety and it was raining. The water sloshing and the water was streaming. My tent was up the terrace. But it was like slipping and swirring around.
She counted two spots?
She will be maybe. Evan has been working on it since he's been nice. So. And so he did try. Well, skipper's really good. It was last year. But I thought we'd have today. Yeah, she was called last year too. Wednesdays are, well. I, I happy to work more for five in the mornings and come home, bring my son and I drive back to the city for speech therapy. Then go home and either have football or practice or game.
I'm gonna go ahead and call to order next council meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that's any decision.
Dear God, thank you for this wonderful day and the cool weather. Guy, our city council meeting and the decision being made here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Okay, I have a couple amendments to the agenda. It would be, he said, opening on the new business one is the community center heater. And another one is bar shut offs policy. If I can get an motion to amend the agenda to cut those additions.
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion that we amend the agenda to new business to include the community center heater and the bar shut off policies.
All of them. And then there's an amendment. Uh, for a couple of speakers, I have Christie Doris.
Hello. Um, okay, so I wanted, I brought some ideas, but I want to propose maybe getting a digital sign to put out maybe in front of Casey's or on Main Street. I'm thinking Casey's might be a better area so people can see what's going on in town. I know a lot of times there's events with churches, with school, um, just facilities in town, but you don't know about much on Facebook. So I thought this would be a great way for everyone to be able to combine it. And then for each month, we could just have, you know, yeah, September 6th, this is going on, be here at this time, September 10th and so forth. And then the community can be more involved. So I did find some signs on Amazon. There were some larger ones, um, well, like a couple thousand dollars. But the ones on Amazon, they range at different prices. The biggest I found was like eight hundred. I've got a couple of prices here and that's kind of for some big ones. But my thought was if we get like a cement platform, you know, two, three feet high, then we can put one of these up so it sticks up. We're still not spending a lot of money on it. And then again, people have more notification and might get the town, the community gathering more. So I don't know if you guys want these.
Next, I have David Sherman.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, David Sherman, 603 West 15th Street. Um, the reason I came to here tonight is a couple of reasons. First of all, I just wanted to say that it's common to hear citizens come up here and just complain and have a lot of just really negative things to say. And I don't want to see that happen. I want to see people bringing positive things. And I just wanted to commend the city with regards to the police department. I think they've done a fantastic job. You know, I remember hearing not too many weeks ago, um, we had somebody come up here and say that we needed to slash the police budget by seventy-five or seventy percent. And that's just not the right way to do things. And I just wanted to say thank you to the city and thank you to the police department for a fantastic job done. Um, I also want to echo some of what Christie just said as well with regards to community events. One thing that I would like to see and something that's kind of affected us is when we have community events at our church, it would be nice for us to be able to have those be able to be published on the community Facebook page for the city or something like that, or being able to have access to that ability if it is a community event and not exclusive just to our church, but something that's open to the whole community. So I'd like to hear your thoughts about that. But the main reason I was coming up here today, um, over the last week and a half, I've noticed a, uh, issue with the water quality. And I've noticed that the water has kind of a, a lake aroma to it, if I'm putting it correctly. And I know, uh, Bill, that you had recently addressed water quality issues in the recent past about turbidity and, and those kinds of things. So I just wanted to let you know that is something I've noticed with the water. And so it's given me a little bit of concern about the water quality and things like that as to whether the water's still safe or what, what's causing that smell to kind of persist over the last couple of weeks specifically, so. Um, but that's all I have for tonight, so.
Um, for, for me, as we start off tonight also, I want to just remind the council that when you do turn your mic on, it takes a moment before it starts speaking out your voice. Please keep that in mind. Um, and also, uh, just in talking to the employees of the city, um, the last few weeks and everything, and all that's needing to be done, looking at being done with the streets and the other things that are coming up, we did not replace, um, both of the workers that left. And instead of looking to replace one full-time worker, I was wondering if the council might consider the potential of getting two part-time workers for public works that would work on one Monday through Thursday and one on Tuesday through Friday or so. Job for the extra hands to fulfill the rest of what needs to be done and accomplish and keep up with everything for the city's meeting.
We're looking at somebody thirty hours or less a week.
Yeah. Thirty, thirty-two or less. A couple of people, thirty-two or less.
Are these going to be floating members or?
That was the idea, that they would be able to work with whatever department needed them that week. Instead of being constantly pulling people from other departments to cover them and that stuff not getting done. We would have employees at that point that could, that would be floaters.
So we lost one and our two. And we're replacing with two part-timers instead of full-timers?
So we had, we lost two and then we had replaced one. Moved our summer mower into a position, but then we never actually replaced a jar here. So instead of a full-time employee, we'd need two part-timers to be looking at.
Uh, I guess, we need people to be able to work though. You get people a lot of the group.
I'll work. So we put out for that. If I can get somebody to approve the consent agenda, motion to approve consent agenda?
Oh, I motion for consent agenda.
I'll serve him.
No questions? On the paper? As you have. City administrator, attorney, courts. Becky, did you have anything before we invite Mrs. Robinson out? Did Mrs. Robinson out? Miss this week, this is next week.
Yeah, I'm very excited about that. So nervous. It's good nerves though. I get to marry my best friend, so I'm pretty pumped about it.
Well, how are you guys tonight? Oh, yes. Sorry, that one's. Yeah, just a red light is. Sorry, that thing's fancy. So I hope you guys are doing great. Um, road department, we have been working on a couple of different ideas. And tonight I've got two maps to present to you guys. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we're working with, we've presented you guys with a five-year plan and we've broken it up into quadrants. And then to also give you kind of a second look, we've also broken it up into an eight-year. That way, if we have one year that we may not have as mu- much funds, it just is a kind of a second course. But the first map I will present to you is a five-year plan.
Do you want to take the table right there?
Right, right there?
Yeah. Morgan, can you hold that up?
Wrong one, wrong one. So sorry.
Let's do this.
Morgan, can you hold that up so we can see it? If you can get that on the white paper, it would be great. Thank you.
My nice lady. So the cool thing about this is that we could go about this a couple of different ways. Personally, what I would like to see is if we went about doing the five-year plan, we had discussed about going from second, East Second Street all the way down to Fourteenth Street. And the reason why we were talking about starting there is if we went that route, we could knock down a whole side of town and have that done in one year. Now approximately, when we drove this, it was eleven miles. Now that number has come from you times it by two. So technically, when we drove it, it was, I want to say, five point five miles. But the other great thing about it, even though that looks like a big section itself, it's really not because some of the roads on here, for example, from Park to Magnolia is gravel. Now, if we wanted to keep that road temporarily, you know, right now, um, we could keep it gravel and go ahead and, um, wait and do that, which would give us more opportunities to work on other sections of road. I've also assessed Sixth Street, um, which is honestly in pretty good condition. Roads like that, there's no reason why we couldn't go through there if there's a small pothole or something and we could go and cut it out and fix it. Another road on here is also part of Magnolia. I believe it's going from Tenth, maybe to Eighth. That was good. So then if we move to our other sections here, some of these are smaller and some of these are bigger. The other thing is that's cool about them is we don't have to absolutely stay to this size. We could always extend a section of road. But this was just kind of to give you guys an estimate. Also, I want to include on here, when we're going through our years, because there's five years, down here in the purple section from, I believe, um, Thirteenth and Cedar, no, Tenth and Cedar, my bad. Tenth and Cedar to Fourth and Cedar is already being done with our road project that we have approved. So that's a whole nother section of road that I want to say that's probably about a mile that we wouldn't even have to do, which then opens more money to be able to do in another section. Does that kind of make sense? All right, so that's my first plan. I don't know how you guys feel about doing an eight-year plan, which when we were talking last time, I had said it kind of depended if it was longer than five years. What I've done here is I've broken up the whole east side of town and made that into three sections. And this was kind of cool because if we ended up having more funds, we could continue going. If not, this kind of gives us, um, a timeline to be able to work everything out. And like we talked about before, each section that we will go to, we will prep and do all the ditch work, get the edges of the road so there's proper drainage. And then once we get all of our equipment and stuff, we will then do all the prep work on the roads. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. I strongly urge, like if it was me, that we start on this side of town on the five-year plan, just because that would be a whole half side of town that is absolutely done, it's finished. That's kind of my thoughts. And here's the thing, we don't absolutely have to go in the order that I have these maps labeled. This is just kind of to give you guys an idea of how we could possibly go about doing this. So that's what my thoughts are.
Taylor, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What time of year would we be doing this? What time of the year is the best time of the year to actually start the road project?
When we are starting to do the road stuff, the best time would probably be right about spring, probably late April, trying to get out of the rainy part of the season, season. But there's no reason why, if we decide to do a certain section of town, we can start the prep work before that. That way, when we do get out of the rainier part, then we can start actually doing like the prep part on the roads because we'll have all the ditches assessed and everything and get them flowing correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or anything regarding?
Does anybody want to look at the maps up close? Because I'll be happy to bring them up. I'm good. Okay. Um, what I'm wanting from you guys tonight is just kind of discussing.
Thank you, Morgan, by the way.
Um, is just trying to decide which route we would want to go about this. That way I can go ahead and present it to Jesse and he can get it presented to the commissioners.
I like the five-year plan.
Five-year?
How much, how many miles you said? That was eleven?
Yes, sir.
So.
And that's the thing, even though technically it's eleven, we don't have to do the full eleven because we can assess the roads again, uh, because some of them were still good in there. So to be honest with you, actually, roads that we would do would probably be more like eight miles. So twenty six, does somebody have a calculator I can borrow? Um, twenty-six thousand five hundred times eight, if you would please.
Uh, two hundred and twelve thousand.
Now, I'm not sure what that number was that we were allotted for the year. Um, that's why I was saying that if we have to go the route of going eight years, that may be a better thing, even though if we went eight, there's no reason why if we have one year that we have more money, it could very well turn into five years.
A lot of how fast it gets done is a matter of manpower and what we find as we go.
Exactly. And the weather too.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's all consistent.
Going back to last meeting, I talked about the zipper.
Uh huh.
The company is willing to do a demo here in Pleasanton on nine thirty. Uh, if we don't want to do it here, then we'll be doing a demo in Butler.
Okay.
It's, I would really like to see it done here.
Okay.
We need, would need to, uh, procure, procure the use of a wheel loader.
Okay.
For a period of time, so we have something to.
I'm, I'm sure that we could, um, call a company and figure out how to get one rented.
Or I was wondering if there's a possibility of bringing that county in on the demo and using their wheel loader push it.
I'd be happy to ask Jesse for sure.
Right. They will come in and, and, and run the machine for us, show it how, show us how it works. It's geared predominantly towards council members, um, realizing this is a bit of a, oh, by the way, here you go. Uh, you know, anybody that can come by would be appreciated so that they can watch. And even if you can't watch, if we do it here in town, we'd be able to see the results of what was done with it.
Did you have a particular area that you wanted to test the demo?
Now, it's one of the things we need to talk about. One of the things that had crossed my mind was that parking area in front of the community center.
Yes.
Right there where it's low and.
Would you be?
Bring it up to make it functional for ADA parking.
Okay, now is that the part facing Main Street?
No, it's a part facing the bank.
Okay.
It would do two things. One, it could conceivably make us with reasonable ADA parking.
Okay.
Plus, it is a confined area, so we can see whether the machine will actually work inside of tight radiuses and.
Okay.
Turns. The only thing we'd have to be a hundred percent sure of is that we don't have water main, gas main, phone lines or what have you.
Which we could do locates and have all that taken care of prior to that. And there's no reason why that, we couldn't go there and get barricades in section off that area and then we could just post on Facebook, hey, this section of town is going to be closed for what we're doing.
More than about two hours to do that entire area.
Oh, I think that would be totally fine. I don't think it'd be a big deal at all, especially if we post it prior.
But catching a gas line with that thing would not be good.
Oh, yes, sir, that would not be good at all.
I don't care about crooked. Gas line will boom.
But yes, I will make sure, um, I'll make sure we have that addressed and taken care of. That way we can get that demo done.
But that's, that's merely a suggestion. If you have someplace else where you feel we can get more bang for our buck, let me know and I'll coordinate.
Honestly, I think that's a really good spot because I think it's kind of killing two birds with one stone, you know? So I think that'll be a good idea for sure.
Is the council agreeing?
Yes.
Zipper demo, nine thirty. Okay. We'll move ahead on getting that stuff ready and everything.
I think that sounds fantastic now. Is, do I have the council's approval to go ahead and get in contact with Jesse to proceed with everything that we've got going on the five, estimated the five-year plan?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. And do you, any of you know off the top of your head, um, how much money we were estimating in the next year? Um, that would be able to go for this? That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. I'm, I look forward to seeing more progress being made. I think this is absolutely wonderful. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Oh, um, I do, no, I'm so sorry. I know one thing you asked me last time, how much the coal patch was, uh, per ton. It was a hundred and thirty dollars and forty-nine cents a ton. I wanted to make sure I told you that, sorry.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, in respect to Ms. Robinson, Becky and I would like to bump her up to the streets. She's just been a street worker with the leadership initiative that she's shown through this. So we'd like to go ahead and bump her up to a change of car.
Are you willing to take that vote?
Yes, sir, I am. I want to make a difference in our community and.
Wait, come up here, I'm saying, broken area.
So sorry.
No, you're good. Because people are going to say, what did she say?
So, so sorry.
So, yeah.
Yes, I am very eager and very excited to take on this if you guys will allow me to because I just want to make a difference in our community.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I look very forward to this opportunity and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief Minister?
Okay. Sorry about that, me leaving a while ago. I had a potential call, but it actually was, ended up being in the county, not the city. So, um, first off, talking about training for all of the firefighters in, in the station, I come across this schedule and I'm going to pass it out to you to let you know. I mean, this is just for twenty twenty-five year, but, um, we have some dates that are Sept- September, October, November, December, that people can potentially try to get into to maybe get the training ball rolling on that side. So I will pass this. Um, next thing, I have everybody's, um, radio identification number, however you want to call it, for the fire department to where they can get their credentials, they can get their, whatever they need to do. Um, that is all had, has been established. And after you guys give me an okay, that you're good with everything, I will, um, send an email to the IT department in the county so he can update the console with everybody's name and number and change of the truck number and things like that. One of the things after last, the last meeting that I was tasked with was I met with Chief Hegwell uh, about changing some potential things in the automatic aid agreement that we have. Um, in that he has proposed to move back to the five miles from the city limits that it was before whenever Chief Dent was in there. Um, he's proposed to move back to that. Now, I know whenever you, it has to, after you guys want to do whatever you want to do, it has to go through city attorney and, and the commissioner and things like that. But just giving you an update, one of the possibilities that he had given me was putting the city of Pleasanton on a mutual aid response only. Um, the, the city of Pleasanton would still get the automatic aid agreement for structure fires in town from the county. But, um, with the ISO situation that we're in, that we're probably going into a, what's called a regression, with the ISO situation that we're in, that we're po- we're probably going into a, what's called a regression. Um, the county is not going to get any points for us going and to assist them in a lot of things until we get this ISO thing taken care of. So, one, you know, one of the things that has been brought to me and to, uh, what he had said was go back to the five-mile agreement. Or, you know, he had even said going to a strictly just mutual aid if they happen to be out somewhere and they need somebody to call, they could call us to go do that, take care of the situation or get started taking care of the situation on the automatic aid agreement. Now, um, my question is, do you guys have a preference of which way you would wanna go? Uh, points-wise, we're not gonna change anything for this time of the regression. We would still be getting the full county points that we have already got from the last mutual aid, but, um, and the county's, uh, talking with Chief Hegwell, they're not going to gain any points from us, whether it's a five-mile or a mutual aid thing.
Well, us responding to fires or calls is also gonna show that we can respond, so I think we should go to the automatic aid agreement within the five miles.
With the five miles. Okay.
What do you, what, I agree with Karen, but what do you prefer?
Well, I like the, um, I like the five-mile thing because that's what it was prior, not saying that it was the way to go prior. But, um, you know, we have the potential to show, like you had said, we have the potential to show that, yes, we are here, we are responding, we are trying to, to better the, the department from where it is right now. The mutual aid thing, we wouldn't get as many calls. Um, so, you know, however you guys wanna go doing, to, to do that, you know, that's...
The side of the automatic aid agreement is still structured fire, automatic aid for structured fire, so it's not automatic aid for everything.
No, no, it's just...
Other than that, it's mutual aid if they need help with something else.
Yes.
If we go to automatic aid within five miles, then we automatically dispatch to all...
Uh, my understanding, I apologize for interrupting.
It would be automatic aid for structured fire only, not everything.
Yeah.
But it changes from city limits to five miles outside, so...
Yes.
And we can, we know whatever we want, right?
Uh, however, well, it's however you guys vote and then it will be brought to the commissioners to, to see if they agree with it and then it's going to be handed off to the city and the county attorney to make sure everything is worded legally.
Cause right now, it's automatic structured fire for all of nine twenty area and then mutual aid on any units that we call us on. And for us, it's then automatic for structured fires and mutual aid for everything else. It's the way the wording is now. So, the only difference in the wording from what we have now to the new one proposed is instead of being all of nine twenty for mu- um, automatic aid for structured fires, it would be just the five miles from the city limits.
So, it's reducing our...
Yes. Nine, um, nine twenties area runs from Payne Road, this side of Mountain City, to the state line. And on the sou- southern border of it, it, um, follows like six and seven hundred road, it'll zigzag down through there. And the northern border is somewhere around the ninety-nine mile marker on sixty-nine, so it, it would be like just north of Trading Post exit. So, it would reduce the amount, you know, the amount of miles, the wear and tear for the truck, um, potential uh, payroll and things like that to possibly be a benefit, but, you know, I mean, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm totally fine with.
So, what would be the benefit to reduce our miles? I mean, that's what I understand is if we're gonna reduce our responsibility area, how is that gonna help the fire department?
Uh, we would still be, um, potentially called, we're supposed to be called to any structure fires within nine twenties area. Um, if we reduce that to the five miles, then that would be... Let me, let me say this the way that... That would be less calls that we would have to respond to, but would possibly give us more of a response of personnel, enough personnel per call showing up to go. Um... It was brought to, um, the, the benefit from the county to the city from what Chief Hegwell and I talked about was there's not gonna be a lot of difference in the county getting points or response from the city of Pleasanton past the five miles, because if we go to the five-mile thing, then anything out of the five miles that we would be called for mutual aid to, they would not get points for it anyways. Unfortunately, being in this regression with the ISO, they're not receiving points for us responding to their automatic aid, other than just showing, yes, we, we are here, we are a fire department, we are wanting to make this fire department successful and move forward.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, well, it's really not for, um, Chief, um, Wisdom. Who determines when he, when there's a, um, application on him, who determines, um, the qualification of the fighter, fighter that you guys interview? Which one of you guys determine who is the, um, who, who brings it to the table?
Who determines who brings it to the table?
Yeah, so after you interview him, so who determines if they're qualified enough to come to the table to for us to vote on?
It's a group effort between him, me and the chief.
But does it, do you get a say in it if, um, say, because I'm asking for Dennis Mitchell. And, um, he, um, was told, he was never recommended for it. He had, I have all the qualifications right here, his certificates. Um, and he was told that he didn't get it and everything, so was you ever asked if you, he, um, you would like to have him on your, um, firefighter?
He approached me and I talked to him about the reasons he wanted to join, cause he wants to join to help people. Um, I brought it to the attention of a meeting that I had with, um, the mayor and councilperson Randall. And my, I was told, no, not to bring him on. And I, and I reported to Dennis Mitchell that, um, I was told no. So, you know, it's, it's, unfortunately, it's probably gonna come down to a vote, just like the, um, council votes on stuff. Some of you are gonna vote one way, some of you are gonna vote the other. The reason why I wanted to get him on, I will tell everybody, and I said the same thing in the meeting. Um, whenever I first got on the department and Chief Watts was in charge on a structure fire, I was going to be the person that was comfortable with taking any of my other firefighters inside and hopefully safely get them, get the job taken care of and get them back out. Now that I'm in this role, I'm not gonna have that, um, opportunity as much. You know, I still would po- possibly have that opportunity. Um, I nee- I need somebody on the department that is, I can be comfortable with and they are comfortable with. And I'm not saying Dennis Mitchell has to be the person. I'm just saying I need somebody on the department that can take somebody else inside that doesn't have the experience, so they can gain experience. I just need somebody now, as well as bringing people on in the future, to get them trained up to be able to do this.
Who's on you? The train? Right.
So, um, actually, the training is up to me. You know, I mean, yes, they all have a, a say in what we do and how we go about it, but, um, no matter what is done, the decisions that are made, it's going to fall on my shoulders.
Is somebody you trust?
Yes.
So, I, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I, I, I was, he was on the county for several years. Whenever I got onto the county, he was actually captain of nine sixty. Um, they were down personnel as well, so anytime that nine sixty got a call, nine twenty and, um, who had several people would respond to that call as well. Um, I worked with him. I don't have any issues. I just need, I'm not saying he is the person that we need to get. I just need somebody that is comfortable and knows how to get into a structure with somebody else and non ex- not as experienced and get them back out.
What about Jake Mattingly?
Jake Mattingly, I worked with him the, the same amount of years and, and, um, I would trust either one of them, but, you know, it, it comes down to a vote.
And, um, I know Jake works out of town, but, um, I'm just saying, and Dennis works here in town, so he would be able to respond on the fire. If, uh, I know, cause I've talked to Lenny and, and, you know, and, and both, and Lenny's op- willing to let him go.
I'm, I'm gonna bring up a point of order here, because we're getting off topic in, in an inappropriate manner of discussing of people and so forth. I will tell you that appointments to the fire department, according to city code, the mayor appoints, the council consents. I do not feel comfortable appointing them at this time and this line of communication is not going to change my mind. It's going to solidify it further.
Well, and I understand that you had a meeting with him and you said for him to do this and that and this and that, and, and, and you let him on to believe that he, uh, was going to be on.
Once again, you're carrying a point of order.
Well, I'm just saying, you'd like to, that's how it is.
Well, this is along the lines of what's been talked about. It is the fire department. The chief is here giving us an update.
Now you're talking, you're starting to talk about personal people.
He needs more firefighters, therefore that is what is being talked about. So, why are you redirecting the questions that are asked to the chief? Reference to the fire department.
And we're, we're just asking about certain people.
Well, cause now you're talking about people who are not on the fire department.
But I would recommend to hire Dennis Mitchell.
Noted. Thank you.
Wow.
Um, so we don't get any further down this, this rabbit hole. Um, I started this off with my very first time up here talking. We gotta have unity. And sometimes the decisions that we make are not the, the decisions that, they don't go the way we want them. But if we start going back and forth and I totally understand and I will do whatever I am told to do. But if we start veering off of this unity thing to where everybody's trying to work together, then things are not gonna work out.
So, I'll bring one point to that.
Yes, sir.
You are the commander on scene, correct?
Yes.
It is your scene, you're in charge. Are there people out there who have applied to this department that you trust that are not on the department?
Yes.
Because of certain people do not want them on the department?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm still trying to recruit other people. Um, there's other people out there that have similar qualifications. Um, I'm not getting any interest at the time. Um, one of the things that I'm being set, told is if we can get this moving forward and get this moving in a better direction, they would think about it. They would potentially do it. They just don't wanna get into the rabbit hole. And I'm gonna tell you, I totally commend the firefighters that have stepped up right now and have established the, the position of we are gonna be in here and we're gonna do our best to move this fire department moving forward to what we need to do. But yes, there are people out there that have qualifications that, um, either have not wanted to get on or have not been appointed to get on.
I just hope that it's not personal vendetta that's being held against them.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, one of the last things that I have, um, and I can, I can hand you this notebook. If you guys want to see the radio numbers of the personnel to, um, who I have, who I have given them to, the new truck number and my new number to where if you guys agree to this as something that you think is a good thing, then I will get the email sent to the IT department of the county, so they can update the console.
I do have a question. Our city ordinance says that as fire chief on scene, you are ultimately in control.
Mm-hmm.
And it is your responsibility to discipline or perhaps terminate if necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anybody that you deem to be inappropriate, and I think that's the way the ordinance rules. I would like to see our ordinance amended, so that the fire chief has the same ability to hire as he has to fire. Um, anybody we wanna talk about, since it's an appointment, we can talk about it in open session, because appointments are not afforded the ro- the rules and coverage of executive set.
Um, elected personnel are not, appointments still are.
Elected person, elected people are afforded that. Appointments are not...
Elected people are not afforded, but appointments are.
But you can only appoint fire chief. You cannot appoint, uh, the firefighters.
I, all firefighters are appointed by the mayor.
They're appointed by the chief.
No, they're appointed by the mayor.
It's no different than the police department chief not having the right to appoint his own officers. Same thing.
But he, he should be in charge. You should not be in charge of what he is interviewing and bringing to the table.
It's no different than public works.
Public works doesn't do that. They, Becky sends out the names and he just, they bring it in, okay?
The difference is, one group we're talking about hired employees.
Yes.
We're talking about volunteers.
And they're volunteers. You're right, Bill. They are all volunteers.
I am extremely uncomfortable with the way we're selecting our firefighters. I think the Chief Wisdom, we put him in a position, we ought to have him provide a recommendation to us and allow us to vote on who it is. If the mayor does not like it, he has that opportunity to veto, but we also have the o- opportunity to override that veto.
Yeah.
I think this would be a question for legal more so than right now, what we can, we should be getting into.
Are you making a motion, Bill?
No, I am not making a motion, because I, this came up to me this afternoon. I literally came into town an hour and a half ago. I've been gone for two weeks, so I am somewhat behind and haven't had a chance to ru- to read all the things that I want to. So, I don't know how I would make a motion that would stand up. I can't say, I would like to amend city ordinance, twelve guys, whatever the heck it is, to say this, because I don't know what to say yet. Bringing legal into it is probably the right answer. I will say that I would like to see the section on fire department.
So, should we schedule a work session to discuss, um, that portion of it?
No, I think we can do it in a little session. I, I'm, about, I'd agree with having perhaps a special session to discuss it, but it has to be open to the public.
Now, even more sessions are open to the public, but yes.
Um, one last thing that I have. Um, last time, we, I talked about a push-button lock to get into the station that has been installed and is ready to go. Um, it's something that we can change the code at any time that we need to. Um, but that a way, if somebody is doing something and doesn't have their key on it, they don't have to wait for somebody else to get the station open, get the truck started, things like that. So, that has been installed and all of the firefighters have been granted the, the code to get into the door. Um, other than that, if you don't have any other questions, I don't think I have anything else.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank, thank you.
Fundraising donations.
Um, it's my understanding that the mayor's had several complaints, because I purchased all the malls from one, the, um, from Main Street. And for this year and last year, we only had one person ask last year and this year. Um, I did not realize it was a contest where they had to have so many to go on a trip when I did it. So I just need to know how you guys want this handled going forward. If we can do it to the student that has the initiative to come in and ask, or if you want to, um, I did call Tara at the school and she said if we wanted to do it to the school, they would divide it out among the students. So it's however you want to handle it, but.
Well, if you posted that the initiative or portion, next year you're gonna have a hundred kids here, kids in here. I know there's not our kids selling, but we're gonna have everybody come in here because we do purchase a lot. So I, I don't know how to handle that.
Okay, I didn't realize it was gonna be such a firestorm. I thought we were doing a good thing showing the kids supporting the school.
That would, that's what my suggestion would be to just do a straight to the class and then have them divide it out amongst other students.
Just write one check and say.
How many did we purchase this year, last year?
The smaller don't have to.
So uh, I hate doing the it's fair for everybody because not everybody has the initiative.
Well, yeah.
With it being public like this, everybody's not gonna try and sell to the city. So we have to then limit how we're gonna be able to purchase. I don't know whether we do it to the school or the first, say five people that show up will buy eight of these.
But then what if somebody doesn't show up?
Well then, now it's public, first five, we're gonna buy eight of these.
But if we have five that we're gonna buy eight of these from, only one person shows up and we got eight moms,
then we can approach the school. Because I, I don't, I don't wanna limit people from their drive to actually do what they want. But I also want to make it fair for the people who don't have a right to city hall or can't get your ride away, aren't the quickest on their bike or whatever. Kind of makes it a little bit fairer for everybody, but yet also limits how many each person can sell. Does, does that make sense?
So you want me to say next fall, just post it out that this city will purchase when the first?
Five.
Five that, that come out.
And we'll buy eight of these, that'll be four things that we have in the past. And if we don't get enough, we can readdress it then and then finish purchasing from the school, they can do it.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, police officer report. Calls for service from the first of August to the thirty first of August was three hundred and nineteen calls. Eight ambulance assists, three domestic batteries, uh, five child in need of care, nine juvenile instances, uh, four mental illnesses, three suicidal subjects, two identity theft, one illegal burn, and one wildlife violation.
What is a wildlife violation?
Uh, fishing license, I'm guessing. Um, codes, six notices, two tickets, five letters, thirty open cases, four closed. We now have six animals in the pound, she picked up two tonight right before the meeting.
Anything else from any of the departments? Maybe do you have anything else? Okay. Stars and Stracks Scholarship or Stars of Scholarship, excuse me?
Uh, I have been to the information of what the um, application to look for before. Uh, more than visitors with Dr. Allen, he was gonna come over and visit with me, but he hasn't. And his main thing was that what they are needing help with is people that live outside of Lynn County.
I'm not comfortable with that. I would rather see it limited to people within Pleasanton city limits or radius within Pleasanton city limits. Um, because like Andrew said, it is taxpayer dollars.
Well, he said that evidently they covered the ones that live in Lynn County and Pleasanton. There's a way that wouldn't have thought, he said, like I said, he never would come over to um, discuss it anymore, but they, he did say that what they needed the help was the ones that lived outside of Lynn County to get transportation.
Is there any way we could ask Mr. Allen to kind of speak to us so we could ask him questions directly? Okay, that would be my, that's what I would be in favor of.
Um, as far as the ADA plan, um, she did not give me what she was supposed to give me, so I still have nothing new um, crupper on that. But we do need to go ahead with some of that stuff even without the plan itself. Um, I know like at the pool, the pools go through the season, but we definitely want to stick around that pad. Are we in agreement on where we want ADA parking at the pool? Do we want it on the east side of the building or on the north side of the building?
I'm still a favor of the east side, it's more of a level into the door.
Yeah, you don't have to go uphill.
It, it is more level on the east side, uh, coming straight in the front door. It does, after putting an, an inconometer on it. It does, is within the pipe raised. We'd have to grind one section of sidewalk to make it flat enough. The issue with putting it on the east side is it needs to be straight in parking and I'm not sure how well it's gonna go with traffic flow um, on that side. The rules, which are somewhat nebulous, do say that it's supposed to be the most direct access. If we went on the east side, uh, we would have to come up with an arrangement for notifications so that somebody could come over and open up that gate for it to be the most direct.
Well, it says most direct.
Most direct, yeah.
It says most direct, it doesn't say shortest.
Just most direct.
Okay.
Most direct.
I mean, I think either way, we're, most direct is a straight shot to the door, the front door, okay? Um, but also with the, the directional parking, we can do it north-south, right? If we had a north-south parking pad there and it opened up onto the sidewalk, like uh, Walmart has that.
Yeah.
The, 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 so I think that it wouldn't be traffic flow if you went north-south rather than east-west. Yeah, I'm sure.
Are you talking about the east parking lot?
East parking lot.
Yeah.
North-south parking space, the.
And the sidewalk there, we, it just go around to the front door, it's pretty flat.
We currently come in from the the front door side, that's the traffic flow we have. So we would have to, the pad has to be on a bad accessible area, has to be on a passenger side of the vehicle. So we would have to come out.
Well, if they pull in, because they pull in from the north, that's the traffic flow, north to south. So if they pull in and they park facing south, passenger side is to the side.
Is to the side, yeah.
And kill the two versus the one stone.
And all we have to do is make the parking spot just a little bit wider so that we have a full full distance and when it rains or it's lost, I think it's nine feet to have that. But I think those sidewalks are six feet.
Yeah. It's um, if the parking would influence uh, building area for the bad accessible.
So we just have to make sure that it's not gonna block the entrance into the parking.
Which puts it closer to the gate, to the pool. Cause it's closer there to the lost water, somebody's gotta come around the corner.
But we're not, we're not worrying about the gate itself, right? Cause they're gonna have to go in the front door to pay, correct?
Right. What I'm saying is the closer we put it to the gate, the easier it is for people to come in.
To keep the vehicle out of the travel, traffic.
First, back it all the way down into that corner by the hole. That would not be, I, I have a videotape if you do it again. I have it up up there.
So are we good at releasing bid specs for that location there on the east side of the building?
I have no problem with it.
Sorry.
To the east side of the building.
Is someone going to again unlock or they won't?
I can do that for I. But no, sir.
Um, Stegy Lake Dam repair.
Um, I sent the engineer's estimates or that recommendations and different options to fix it. Just in a might get lost in the shuffle, but nothing's been done.
So I'm still a favor of option two.
I would, I would agree option one, which I think would do nothing, is not acceptable. And option three, which I think would pretty much be building that entire section as a dam, which is not feasible uh, without destroying the lake, building it from scratch. Um, I, I'm in favor of option two, which is I think bring the contractor in to backfill the gap properly and pack it in. Something towards that effect.
And this CDBG fund that you have put down here for urgent needs, is that a?
Um, I think we, I contacted them on that. And this is something that the engineer sent. Um, I think I, I checked them when it first started and I don't think that it's going to be eligible, but I will recheck again once, now that I know how you want to feel about it and I'll let um, Jason know so he can, we can move forward to get some good specs.
But these funds, are they um, we, we have to repay them?
No, we'll have to pay for it to be done.
But, but you said that CDBG has funds, if this is available, isn't it?
If, if it's available, but um, I did check with them and, and.
It'll be a long.
Well, no, the, the CDBG has been asked like if your dam is burst, you can go in, they will help pay for the immediate pain, the rupture or damage. But as far as now that um, we know it's there and we have to go in and repair it, it's not gonna be eligible.
Correct.
That I will double check now that I know that, um, I did call and talk to um, the general planning on it. But I will double check with them again just now that we know how we're getting on the list.
Um, don't, don't truck repairs, will you?
The international we got up there is throwing multiple engine codes. We've had two people in to clear the codes, restarted it and within mere seconds, the codes are back. We need to haul the truck to an international certified repair group so that they can talk to the rain and do whatever this international does to make it work. The people we had look at it here have both recommended that it has to go to a a certified repair job. What type of codes is it there? Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. There were, I think there were about half a dozen of them that I get through. It started off looking like it was a throttle position sensor. And I think we spent about eight hundred dollars and had that throttle position indicator for multiple replace. Um, it did not solve the issue. Uh, we can Easter egg it or we can pay somebody and that's what we do.
And it takes a special machine to, to read the codes?
We thought we had brought people in with the right special machine to read the codes. Cause they were able to pull the codes out and clear them. But as soon as the, you restarted the, the truck, the codes came back.
Yeah.
Where's the nearest international repair?
I think it's up in our local park, or Overland Park, sorry. Before I made a location, Jimmy was gonna look and see where we could take it.
I think it's up in the, either Overland Park or Lake Dade.
Yeah, but it's gonna have to be hauled. And our local agency has a heavy haul to pull it up there. That's not a huge, um, that's, I don't know, I'm not thinking twenty-five hundred or four grand just to get it to the shop.
How long we have to go through?
It's not even paid off yet.
Do we have the money to haul it up there?
I mean, you'll just have to take it out of the street back to the, and it doesn't do any good sitting back here. Only six months now, not going to use it either.
I guess we have to make a motion to approve hauling it up and repairing it. All right, I guess right now I'll wait for this, haul it up.
I mean, we can give an estimate of, am I assuming before we tell them to go ahead and fix it, but then the mindset was still paying off, so.
So I, I'll make a motion to approve um, towing the truck to the international repair facility.
Oh, I know.
I don't know if it needs a volume up because it's, we don't even have a ballpark. So I can go without it, right?
How, you're not showing us then?
Well, that's what I just asked, but we don't even have a ballpark that we can just put a limit on.
So without even a ballpark of the towing, the motion is to approve the towing to the international repair shop.
Right, even, no matter what we do, we have to get it to, you know, somebody to fix it.
I'll second. I do have questions though.
Okay.
What tow company are we gonna use? How much is it gonna cost? These are things that I would like to find out and even if we had to have an emergency meeting to finalize because.
Then we have a local one that can do it, so if we reduce them.
Yeah, the B and B or R and B or whatever.
So the motion on the table that's been sent in to is to have it towed to the international repair shop. Any other questions?
Cause I just Googled it and said the closest one to our area is Wichita.
No, there's one up in, it's either Outlay though or um, Overland Park because they took some of the fire trucks that are in that shop.
Okay.
And Becky don't find out how much it's a thousand dollars.
Single discussion? All in favor, now you go to international shop, ask your neighbors? A community center heater.
Um, Jason Love was down, um, working on the community center heater today. And um, he put together the the one that happened over just being out on the floor, they don't know how they got there or how long they've been there. He, we did it all, but the blower is not working on it. So it will be a certain price to get a new blower. The other, other option would be you can do this in a, even though.
Um, I'm a favor, I'm a favor that it is lower rather than a new blower.
Yeah, if the, if the blower can do this by, or by.
Looking at it, it looks to be almost brand new condition, just never.
Yeah, and no one seems to know why it was ever.
Dismentored.
Yeah, the part, so may, maybe that's why they took the part is that wasn't working when they first got it or something, I don't know.
Can it be repaired?
No.
Make a motion to approve the. Make motion to approve the purchase of a new blower for the community center furnace.
It's been moved and seconded to purchase a new blower for the community center heater, it's broken. Any other discussion? All in favor? Pass to unanimous. Um, what are show of policies?
Um, we turned off approximately fifty meters today, started on a payment, and we had some very unhappy customers, and, um, not only were they calling here, they called, uh, several other council on it, and I guess, um, if there's a policy that you want to do different, we need to address it or else, um, we need to address the policy if you want it changed, otherwise we need to know that we have the backing to follow the code the way it is.
We, reading the code, it requires us to send them a certified letter, and we say we'll do that once a year. And that, that is a reasonable expectation. It is also a reasonable expectation of the customer that they be notified with some sort of notification approximately twenty-four hours before turning the water off. We used to put yellow tags on the door to give people a chance to come down and pay. We have since deemed that as an unsafe action. Um, if it's unsafe, we need to get the unsafe people that are causing it out of the city, because we're paying a hell of a lot for a police force, it should be able to solve that problem. We either put notices on the door twenty-four hours before disconnect, or we send out certified letters. In the case of one that I reviewed today, she has a cash flow check where she paid last month's bill. The bills were received in the mail yesterday or today, and her water was turned off today. Um, if we're gonna do this, we're also gonna institute the hearings that are outlined in our ordinances, and everybody that has their water turned off can have a hearing, and by God, we'll put people here to listen to it and answer up. But we have got to notify people at least in some way sometime before the water's turned off.
Then the codebook needs to be changed to reflect that.
It does not, it does not say anything about the yellow tags, it doesn't require that now. It does say that the first disconnect is a zero fee, the second disconnect is a set up twenty-five dollar fee, then fifty, and a hundred, it also says that that follows you for the life if you're in the city. So almost anybody that's had things turned off and turned back on is probably a hundred dollar reconnect fee right now. There are some guidelines in the code. Uh, it is a little ambiguous when you read down, it talks about disconnects, and then it refers you back up to section one, one oh four, or one, one oh two through one oh four, uh, which is where it gives the, the fee schedule. We have to come up with a way to provide notification.
Well, everybody has a cell phone nowadays, right? Ninety-eight percent actually have cell phones. Is there a text service that we could?
We do have a text service that, um, how much, um, employee labor do you want to put into this? I mean, if we're always supposed to go through and everyone that's, we're gonna shut off and then look up their phone number, and what if they're not signed up for the text service, then, I mean, we'll do whatever you want, just have to realize that it's gonna take some employee a while to do this, and you can't just, you have to go in and set everything up, and.
And if we institute hearings, it will take approximately four man hours per person per.
Well, they can do hearings now, the cert, there is a procedure set up that if anyone wants to have a hearing, they can do that, but nobody ever has.
Nobody ever has, because nobody's ever told them that they could.
It goes, it's in the notice, it's in the certification letter that it's in.
Candy, could you, uh, do you have access to what letters were returned of not being able to serve from, uh, the certified mail? Do you have access to that information?
Um, I have some of the letters that have come back, and I've got some of the green cards that were signed for.
Okay, how many, how many were not servable? That you sent certified?
I would say out of a hundred percent, maybe a quarter of those.
A quarter of them was not servable, okay, thank you.
Our current database, then, are the quarter that were unservable, are those going to landlords or to the person, or who's it sent to? I guess is the question.
It's sent to the account holder.
To the account holder.
Whether it be a landlord or not.
So you said, you sent out fifty of them in August, is my understanding, is that correct?
Uh, the disconnect letters, or?
Yes.
I would say approximately that, yes.
Okay, and then you got a quarter of them back that were undeliverable? And then you keep the cards that were delivered and signed for, is that correct?
Yes.
And we're doing that once a year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
How much does that cost when you, when you're doing that?
Ten dollars, ten dollars and forty-eight cents a letter.
And we discussed that when we rewrote the codes, and really, there's no other way to do it, to have a legal documentation that it was sent.
That's what we went to, one, whatever.
Yes, exactly, correct. So it's not employees going out and just shutting off water. There's a system that is somehow following through the cracks, that the city doesn't have any control of, nor does the resident have any control of, if the mails, the certified mails are coming back undeliverable. So I think the question is, is where do we, what do we do with those ones that were not delivered? Instead of having hearings and going on about everything, can we hand deliver? Do you want to, um, have those hand delivered out and signed for so that we can keep the green card? Um, instead of trying to make a mountain out of a molehill, take the ones that are not deliverable and hand deliver those?
In the case of an undeliverable, we are within the rights of our current ordinance to shut that water off and keep it locked until that is delivered. That's all to be undeliverable.
But you were just complaining that people were not being notified, they're not being notified because their mail is not being delivered. So therefore, if the mail is not, is undeliverable.
That, that is not, in the, in the case that I'm addressing, it is not applicable. They'll, they'll, the notice of being rear, which we send one time a year.
Right.
And sometimes people get arrears more than one time a year. Uh, the first time the, the notice was sent, it was responded to, the bill was paid.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in this case, the water was turned off today. The bill was received today. The last payment record that I saw was a water bill paid to the tune of a hundred twenty-nine dollars in August.
But you don't know if that check was for past bills from before August, that could have been a check.
Well, I, I would show that they were getting, they were paying everyone prior to that.
Okay, so you're talking about one individual, I'm talking about in general. If we're going to notify them and let, and with the undeliverable mail, the certified letters that could not be undelivered or delivered, then we, do you wanna take them personally out to the house and have them sign up the thing?
No, once, once it is, we have attempted to serve, our ordinance allows us to lock that meter and tell it to pay.
Okay.
Therefore, you meet the requirements, they have to come in and you see them, and therefore it is delivered.
Okay.
And then delivery becomes null and void, or I mean, not germane. The issue is, you know, I can go through the billing system, and I, there are probably a significant number of people that fall rear by X number of days. The bill is, the way it reads now, it says the bill will be out at the first of the month, and you have until the fifteenth to pay the bill.
Okay.
At that time, you're subject to disconnect.
But isn't there also a thing on there that says that if they're having issues, to contact city hall?
Excuse me, Mr. Smith, what it is, is after the fifteenth, you'll be charged a penalty, and you'll be sent a notice if you haven't. We won't be shut off until the first of the next month.
So they literally have, with the link fee, two extra weeks before they get shut off?
Okay, so.
Should be that way.
It is that way.
In this case, there was a bill paid in the middle of August, which would mean that the, the account was brought current. It was paid in July, it was paid in August, that would make the account current, which means that realistically, the first of November should have been the cutoff date, not, not the first of, uh, September.
We just have to.
That would be, that's definitely a unique situation for that one customer.
I would, I would like to think that it is unique. I am not convinced that it is unique. I have taken a lot of grief over disconnects. And I am generally on the side of you pay your bill or you don't get service. But there is a certain degree of humanity and courtesy that says, before I am going to shut off your water, I'll at least give you twenty-four hours or a few minutes to run down to city hall and pay your bill.
So a second water bill notice?
That's what we.
That's, that's what you're asking for, you're asking for a second water bill notice and a day of our employees' time.
And when, when do we cut it off, Bill? When, when, because there's always gonna be an exception to the rule, and for whoever that was, I'm sorry that that happened. We can apologize, and we can discuss giving them, I don't know, something. But to reinvent the wheel every time there's a complaint, we, we, we pass this policy with stuff in mind. We don't control when people go and get their mail. We, we don't control when they pick it up. We don't control if they put it on the table and don't read it because it's covered up with a lot of other mail. There's a lot of reasons why people don't get their mail. Maybe their kids picked it up and put it underneath the couch, and, and they, they, but if they call city hall beforehand, if they haven't got a bill, they know they haven't got a bill, it's a bill they pay every month. Then they call city hall and say, hey, did you guys send me a bill? City hall's confirmed, yes, one was sent out. Then they can say, okay, I'm short of money, can you guys work with me? And I am sure that they are more than happy to work with them. But we've got, we've got to have a cutoff time, and we've got to say, there is some sort of responsibility. We will take responsibility whenever they're wrong, but we can't adjust for every single person.
I'm not asking for it to be adjusted, I would like to see the rules followed. I would like to have a rule that says you get, um, at least a twenty-four hour notice before you're disconnected.
So the two weeks is enough?
So the two weeks is not enough? From the fifteenth of the previous month to the first.
If, if you send out a letter in January to somebody that's delinquent.
Okay.
You send that letter one time.
Okay.
There is no more communication with the customer until the water is turned off. There is no like notice sent.
Okay.
There is, there's just no communication with the customer. You send out a bill, and it is people that frequently fall rear, or fall rear in more of a long time. You get one letter a year, and I endorse that because it is an expensive thing. We also put the late fee on which covers sending that letter.
So your suggestion is to, um, have an employee then go give a twenty-four hour notice the day before, then shut it off then?
I'd really like Aaron's idea with a text message. Uh, if we know what the account holder's phone number is, or we can change the application process and acquire that data.
Okay.
And then we can, twenty-four hours before disconnect, call, and you don't even have to talk to them, you can leave a voicemail and say, tomorrow you will be disconnected.
Are we calling or texting?
Call, text, whichever.
Cause it was text.
How would that take? Well, look, fans, how many, how many do you have that, this, this month, it was over fifty, wasn't it?
It was fifty-three.
So you'll have to go in and, um, make sure that we have everybody's phone number, you'll have to do individual if you want to put an amount on there.
We'd have to check with legal, but I think to send a text message, we have to get their permission.
Permission, yes, we do.
To send a text message for that, and then if they decline, then what do you do?
Yes, Candy.
Well, here's the court here.
Candy, go ahead.
Can I say that?
Can you talk here, so we can hear you better, please?
Um, I would just like to say that half of the information on those accounts is not accurate. I have tried to reach out to people, uh, just today, uh, that wanted return phone calls on information about these shut offs, uh, amounts due, things like that, and we could not get ahold of them because their information is not current. We have mail coming back from people that have moved and don't say anything to us. Uh, we have mail coming back from people who just absolutely refuse it. Um, the post office writes that on the letter, whether or not it's been refused, undeliverable, dog at the, the gate, whatever the case was. So we are not very successful at getting back to these folks with letters or their information that they have on file.
Would it be to our advantage to make up a new water service application form? And ask that everybody fill out a new one with the next billing cycle and send it to them? This, this month, you sent them out as postcards again rather than envelopes.
Yes, sir.
So, so you get an application to the postcard law order.
I'll make an amendment to what I, I said earlier. I have received my bill via email. So every, whenever it comes out, it gets emailed to me. And I've got, I save that email until I pay it, right, so I always have the amount. But that's automated, right? You guys don't send that?
We do.
You do?
It's the very last process in the, uh, sending of the bills, is to send the email accounts.
Okay, so if we were to include emails, would it be easier for you to send a mass email more or less saying, if you haven't paid your bill, the cutoff is this date?
If they're signed up for the text alert system, we can do it all at one time and just say, water shut offs tomorrow. And then it wouldn't have an amount or anything, but it would go to, uh, we could send it to everyone that was signed up to that.
I think that's a good idea, cause I mean, how many people, do you know how many people are signed up for that?
It was like a hundred and seventy-five or eighty last time I checked.
So did you send out another thing in the, on Facebook or somewhere saying, hey, you need to sign up, cause we're gonna put water things on it, whatever?
Whatever you guys wanna do, but I think it would be, it would take a whole lot less time to do it that way than to try to notify that individual.
We're still talking, that's, that's only twenty percent of the town.
Yeah, so.
Who's signed up for that?
We've gotta make, we've gotta make a decision, and I think that we probably oughta get, wait for legal again.
Where's she at?
We probably ought to.
Is she staying in San Antonio?
We probably ought to, uh, get legal involved with what we can and cannot do, because a mass email would also be good. But we've got to draw a line at some point of where we stop holding everybody, holding us more accountable than the citizens that have agreed to pay this bill, so.
I agree with you, but I also agree that if they're, if the letter in January, and they forgot that they got the letter, and now it's September or October.
Right.
They get another, or they don't get another one, but they forget about the bill. I've forgotten, I've been laid up, paid my bill late. But, um, if they forgot, it's shut off. The only other option, I would say, is do it twice a year, for six months.
I have a good intention. Why don't we try next month, and they don't have to get legal involved, because it, we're not specifying a certain person, we can. We can just send it out to everyone that signed up that says water shut offs will take place and the date.
Okay.
And I can post something on Facebook tomorrow that says, you know, this is, we're gonna try this for a month or two this year and sign up to it.
Okay.
And then that way, you're sending it to everybody, so you're not signaling anybody out. But that gives them a chance to be notified. They know whether they paid their bill or not, and if they don't, they have time to call.
I think that's a good idea.
I noticed today that my scene on Facebook had a really cheery yellow
Yeah.
posting that said, oh, by the way, ain't paid your bill, we're turning you off tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I, I can, I can provide a water application too, so that you can see what information we're asking for, which is quite a bit of information. Just on one, if there's two people on that account, then we're getting double that information. So we are gathering quite a bit of information, uh, it's just...
I think a lot of the thing is people change phone numbers so much anymore. That you have a hard time keeping up with it, but we can...
So I, I guess why I think going down the email route is a little bit easier, 'cause I got the same email for fifteen years.
But then we're gonna run into the problem, I have a feeling that it's gonna be, oh, well, it must have went to my spam, I didn't see it, I don't wanna pay the overturn, the connect reconnect fee. Or I didn't get it, or I accidentally deleted it, it's always gonna be an excuse.
We did our due diligence by attempting to do a notification that you're going to be disconnected, you know? Disconnecting them, I still think is what you do when somebody doesn't pay their bill. But I think we need to give notification that it's gonna happen.
Let's try this through the text alert, because that's what we got that system for, and maybe more people will sign up for it.
Come up on board and, and use it, I think that's a great idea.
Candy, when people come in and pay their bills, can you just confirm their phone number and their email address? That way, um, whatever, they come up to the window and say, hey, can I confirm your email and your, um, phone number, so if...
Absolutely.
So you'll have it, a current one on record.
We can do that.
Okay. I would appreciate doing that, 'cause if you're sending out all these mails, this mail that's coming back, something's wrong here, you know, like we've discussed already, but I would just prefer you to just do that if you would do that.
Okay.
There was, there was a gentleman that was going to address us for, um, talking about e, e paying the bill or auto deduct. And our rules say that that's the customer's responsibility, and that's pretty common if you buy something at a place of business, and the place of business gets charged a three and a half percent service charge, that's gets passed to the customer. Do we have an account that people can actually do auto deduct and auto pay?
We do have a auto debit. Uh, that's taken out about the seventh, eighth, possibly ninth of the month. Um, the fee is still charged to the customer, the two point five percent debit fee. Um, but other than that, I'm not aware of any additional fees.
Do we have any people that are taking advantage of that?
Uh, we've got a three-ring binder pretty full of people who do. And I think I signed up another two or three just last week.
We, uh, used to have a different credit card, and, uh, the city was eating the credit card fees, and some of you were on heroin, and it was thousands of dollars a year. And it depended on what type of card you used, how many times a month that that card was used, and then we were paying fees on top of the fees. So this is the, um, one that we use through the state, is the one that most municipalities use because it's just a two point five, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, fee, and it goes to the customer, we don't pay any additional fees. And it's a lot cheaper than most of your credit card or...
And that would be just like doing a, a auto moving tag renewal online, or...
Yeah, account uses the same system.
Transplant license online, it just, it's automatically deducted.
Yep.
So we can get people on that, that would solve a lot of problems, you could have an hour.
Yeah.
But the text message and email and, and Facebook.
Yeah, so we'll try that and see. And just so that everyone's aware, we will work with anybody, just please call us, if you, if you come in, you sign the paper, you can't make it, call us, keep us informed, we'll work with you.
Yeah, um, working with, and if you call, I'm just gonna say this, especially since we're on the air and all, um, if you do call, please be nice to our employees. Um, it is not their fault that your bill is not paid. Uh, please be nice to them, and they'll work as quickly as they can to, um, take that payment and get you reconnected if that's needed.
Thank you.
I wanna say one thing, Candy, I've had a lot of compliments on how you answer the phone and how nice you are, so I just wanna make sure you have that.
Thank you. I, I try to be decent, I know everybody has rough days, so, so do I. But at the end of the day, I know I have to maintain my customer service to the public, so...
Yeah, I hear, oh, that Candy, that lady, what's that lady's name? Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Erin, do you have anything?
Yes, since we're talking about work, I've got two things. Um, it brought to my attention that these slides, the pool, use a hose to run water. Slide themselves?
It's actually hard pipe to cross, but it's, it's coming out of the water supply, yeah, awesome.
Is there a way that we can recycle pool water?
It could be done, but the, uh, water that's going in on the slide just barely makes up for the evaporative loss during the course of the day. So we're not really wasting the water. We either, we either gotta put it through the slide or put it again through the app.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the rate was that we were losing compared to what we were paying.
Where the supply to the slide at best is probably thirty gallons an hour, or forty gallons an hour, so...
Okay. And then I also wanna revisit the landlord issue with the water bills. Um, I saw a bill for eighty-four dollars, and they used three gallons in a vacant house. Um, I think that maybe we can create a form that if landlords can have a vacant house, they can come in, sign up, and we charge them per gallon, I don't know what the per-est per gallon is, but maybe something along that line. At work, we can change the, uh, the code to include a landlord, a vacant, I wouldn't even say landlord, I'd just say vacant housing price.
I don't have a problem with it as long as there's some documentation that backs it up.
See, I, I uh, for using three gallons, they paid more than what I paid for using however much my house uses, I don't even know. But I, I saw a bill, three units, and it was eighty-four dollars, um, with the change that we did last time. Um, I don't think that's right.
Something that we had talked about when I first came here was, right now, you charge to, up to the thousands, you can make it where you can bill to the gallon.
So I, I don't know how difficult that would be.
It's not, it's just setting it in the computer, 'cause we did it.
I don't know if we wanna say minimum twenty dollars, or, um, anything under a hundred and fifty gallons, or whatever we...
I say, I, I don't care how you guys wanna do it, I just want to see some documentation so that if the auditors pick that account to pick that account, I wanna know how I figured it, that I have something I can show them that says this is how it is figured that way.
Yeah, that's kind of, I was, I was more or less trying to see if we can either make a amendment or a resolution to amend the codes so that there's either one, a vacant housing price, um, that they can, um, sign up for, and then we can bill twenty dollar minimum, anything over a hundred and fifty gallons is charged by the gallon or something like that.
So I, I know several people in town that use a hundred, a hundred and fifty gallons a month, and that's it. But they're still charged a thousand gallons at everybody else's, so that's all good. So that initial bill for everybody is the same. But if we switch, like Becky had, has proposed a couple times, to the, um, cost per gallon, then each person would be then paying for the water that they actually use. Instead of, if I use a thousand and two gallons, then I'm paying for two thousand gallons of water.
I mean, that's not really a thousand, dude. Do you wanna go, if it's easy to go to the per gallon?
It's just a matter of changing the setup, setting in the computer.
And I, I like that better, because if you have people that are on a fixed income, then they, if they don't use water, but they're getting charged for a thousand gallons, but they only use a hundred and fifty, two hundred gallons, then we're helping them out. So that's better for that.
Oh, I mean, I just want people to pay the bill.
Exactly, and like when I water my garden in the summertime, I expect to pay more because I'm gonna go over that, because I'm choosing to do that. So when I water my garden or anything like that, I expect to go over and pay more because I'm using the water.
A lot of people, a lot of people build a pool.
Well, they, right, but they can call down, we don't have a special price for that, okay?
Yeah, I...
We used to have a special price for that.
Well, they did it one time here, that will be timed to come out of your pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, uh, I would endorse a, uh, a vacant property notification so that a landlord can notify City Hall that a property is vacant, but they have to send some sort of written documentation that says, this property was vacated on this date, so we can do a final meter read, and then it's held as an inactive account until it's rented again, and either the landlord comes down or reactivates it, or the tenant.
So how much water would you allow for use during that time?
We need, we need... For an inactive residence, that it should be inactive.
If it's inactive, they don't get a bill at all?
Yeah. So if somebody moves out, you have a vacant piece of property, they come down, they inactivate the account, and then when they, the property is occupied, they reactivates the account. The minimums are what pays the bills. Uh, if we do away with the minimum, my recommendation is we raise our rate to the same rate that they're paying rural water, which will triple the water bill.
Well, let's think about this, who's paying the minimum that isn't using the water?
There are a significant number, when I went through and looked at the possibility of billing on a per gallon versus a minimal,
Uh-huh.
to see how much that was going to cost. Uh, I went through the numbers to see whether it would be disadvantageous to the city and how much advantage it would be to the citizens. You know, frequently, my bill is for two thousand gallons, and I use a thousand and seven or eight. Uh, and it aggravates me. There are a lot of people, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, but when I was reviewing billing data, there were probably in the vicinity of twenty-five to thirty people on the roster that use five hundred gallons or less a month. If we did away with the minimum for thirty people, that's a significant chunk out of our budget.
What income level are they?
I dealt specifically with addresses and numbers, I have no idea who...
So it's probably the elderly, or the people in hood housing that don't use much water, that are on a fixed income, and we're penalizing them instead of having the people that can afford to pay for it by the gallon, pay for it by the gallon.
Something that you might do is a compromise, is we add a base charge, and then you, the gallons they use, so everyone could still be charged, say, a base charge of whatever. And then their gallon used to just on top of that, so you don't lose all of your, your base.
That's the fairest right there.
But yet, the ones that pay, that use water pay for it. So like our base was thirteen seventy-five for water and ten for sewer, and then anything over that, any water actually used, so like your landlords, or the people that didn't have anything, they would pay the base charge. And then if they use ten gallons, they don't be charged for ten gallons, but if they were down the street, they're still gonna pay the base charge that they would pay for the ten thousand gallons that they use. So you're still, you would still have, you wouldn't lose as much going just, oh, you're only getting charged for five gallons, so you're getting charged the base and then five gallons, rather than the thousand gallons.
And that's, that's the fairest option. That's, that's the option that we should be using.
So you just kinda gotta figure out what your base would be so that the city doesn't lose money, but yet you're still trying to help your citizens.
A lot of this information, if you still have it, is in an email from Becky to us on December twenty-seventh.
Um, decreasing our minimums, uh, although it sounds good. Um, if we cut it in half, you're basically looking at half the manpower. You'd need to fire somebody.
So how about this, can we pull data? Can we see how many of our residents use less than a thousand gallons? How many use more? What the average bill is?
Average bill, gallon wise or dollar wise?
Dollar wise.
And gallon wise.
Currently.
Yeah.
And then break it down what the average bill would be for those who are even less than a thousand, more than a thousand, if we were to go to the gallon price.
And what do you want to use, do you want to figure it like with two or three different base rates?
Yeah, I would like to see what the base rate would need to be to stay where it is.
Yeah, okay.
I don't wanna move, I don't want the water plant to lose money. Uh, because then we can't keep our employees and keep the water the way it is and how it is.
Right.
But I also want, don't want somebody paying eighty-five dollars for three gallons of usage.
So this may take a while, but, um, a suggestion I would have is if we're gonna make any changes in the billing system, it's much easier to do it at, like, with the January bill.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, what, we've got half months left?
So it will take, um...
Three months left.
I have the statistics from January of twenty twenty-four and August of twenty-four that Becky had previously sent. Less than a thousand gallons is a hundred and thirteen people, over a thousand, a thousand gallons, between a thousand and, and a thousand nine ninety-nine is a hundred and thirty-one. The two thousand range is a hundred and eight, the three thousand is sixty-one, the four thousand is sixty, the five thousand is thirty-three, the six thousand is sixteen, the seven thousand is fourteen, the eight thousand is nine, the nine thousand is eight, and over ten thousand gallons uses is twenty-five people in January.
So what, December twenty-first?
December twenty-seventh. Um, in August of twenty twenty-four, it was a hundred and twenty-eight, less than a thousand. In the thousand range was ninety-eight, two thousand was ninety-five, three thousand was eighty-one, four thousand was fifty-six, five thousand was twenty-seven, six thousand was twenty-seven, seven thousand was nine, eight thousand was thirteen, nine thousand was twelve, and over ten thousand gallons was thirty-seven.
And that's where you're gonna be making up your money is when the gallons are used, so we're not, we're not expecting the lower income people to pick up our tab.
This proposal that she sent was with a base water rate of thirty and a base sewer rate of twenty-five, and it left the city in around the same price range.
Oh, God, you ruined that, I did that all over again.
So the base is thirty for the water and twenty for the sewer. So if you used zero gallons, you're paying fifty dollars plus tax.
Yep, yes.
Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm fine with going to the gallons if we constitute or institute the, the minimum payment to keep the water where it is now. Um, that's not saying that later down the road we can, we're not gonna have to raise it again, prices increase. Um, but also going back to the vacant house, I would like to have some process where if the house is going to be vacant, we can maybe lower it down to twenty dollars because nothing's being done in that house.
So if they're, if they turn the water off, then they're not charged anyway? But most of them wanna keep it on because they either wanna show the house, or they wanna do some cleaning, or they want... So that would mean you would need to determine if you, if that's what you wanna do, you just need to set a policy so we can...
Yeah, I, that's what I'm kinda, I wasn't speaking directly to you, but that's kinda the policy I was thinking. Because I don't want to go to the vacant, they get nothing.
Yeah.
Because water leaks happen, somebody's not at the house. They get a bill and it's a thousand gallons, like nobody's supposed to be there. Because water leaks happen, somebody's not at the house, they get a bill, and it's a thousand gallons, like nobody's supposed to be there, and then they investigate. Um it might save somebody's house from damage. Um they might have a water leak that they're not aware of, um so that could be a warning tool. But if they were a landlord, and they know that they're trying to get somebody that rent the house, but they can't find anybody, I'd like to have them have an option to come in, fill out paperwork, say, hey, it isn't full, I, I need a little bit of break here, and we can offer that to them.
So what kind of, what do you have in mind, and I can draw something up and present it to you guys for landlords?
What I'm thinking is, it's a thirty-day bill from the day they come in.
We have, we only have one billing system, I mean, it's whatever the bill.
So whatever will lead to the next billing cycle, or whatever, um the minimum would be twenty dollars. But then.
Twenty total, or twenty one, or twenty?
I'm, I suppose all numbers, we can talk about it, um but something will, what the base would be.
So say twenty-five.
Sure. Um and then it's only good for, until the next billing cycle. So then they would have to come in and do it again if they wanna stay, otherwise the bill starts over again.
So you wanna so if, if they have a vacant h- house, you don't want them just, it to be good for as long as the house is vacant? You want them to have to come in every month, then fill something out?
We can do an email, we can do, um I, I'm, I'm spitballing here, so you guys can.
Some documental, some documentable piece of paper.
Yes, I mean, they don't have to necessarily come in every month.
What, like a quarter or something, that we, we limited to?
We had it, where it was a one-time thing, they came in and they signed it, ours was a little different, but we had another landlord agreement, and it was, you signed it, and you listed the addresses of the house, and then you could put, if this house was vacant, if, if this house is in my name, and I use less than so-and-so water than that. I said, my problem is just, no one can find any documentation, so I don't, I mean, I don't think it's necessary for them to have to come in and do it every month, or I mean, as long as we have something on file that states, this, this is the landlord, this, these are the houses that they have, and if it is put back in their name, or when it moves out, and it's put back in their name, then we do it this way.
That's fine, I just, I worry about some shady landlords. They let somebody move in.
They aren't gonna get away with it more than one month, because we can tell by their water usage.
Okay. I already know if we were.
I mean, if they're, if they're on this list, and they use more than whatever gallon you set it at, that's gonna throw us a red flag.
Okay. So that, that's something that would actually, you wouldn't have to go through a match, it would just literally, the program would tell you, hey.
Well, no, you would have to know what name it is, but you can pretty well, you gotta report, and you, if, there's not, what is there, ten maybe landlords, maybe? So I mean, it's not gonna take that long to. And we can put, even put something on their account that says landlord, and flag it, so that it stands, you know, we can write a report, run the landlords, and it'll run those, and then you have a law in one spot, oh, this one needs more than whatever gallons.
Okay.
So what gallon wise would you like to set this at?
I would probably say a hundred gallons.
All right, I will get something typed up, and present it for you at the next, so maybe the next meeting, have it over here and stuff, so.
No, that's all right.
Uh what is that brand that we got for the streets, um what is that, does that have an expired date on it, or?
We can't even start letting the biz until after the first of the year.
Somebody asked me, so, I thought I would ask, so after the first of the year?
Yeah, yeah, there's specific dates, when you have to let the biz, when you have to do this.
Okay. I just didn't know, so that's why I was like, I'll have to ask.
I'll get with them and see what we can do about the aroma, uh I'm gonna go and have it dosed, so I will pull that string tomorrow and see what we can do.
I'll say it is a lot better now, though, correct?
I mean, I've, I've noticing it more with the hot water than the cold, so it's possible, I mean, it's just a church that has a hot water tank, but I've been using the water an awful lot, so. But it's happening both at the church and at the parsonage, so.
Well, we do run into this thing every year with the lake turning over, I don't know if we're in that period.
I didn't notice it last year, but this year I did, so, yeah.
Maybe two, three.
I mean, I, I'm not, I, I noticed it, but it was only like a day.
I may just need to flush it out, then, you know.
I don't, I don't have a hot water tank, I might as well hold in line, so I don't have any, I'll go right out real quick.
What is your address, and we can have them try to flush in the lines?
It's uh, so six oh three West fifteenth and ten twelve Laurel.
Now I did run into, uh at my church, we had to clean the drain and flush out the hot water tanks.
Okay.
To get rid of the smell. And it was just from passion to pilot.
Any addresses?
Any?
Nope.
Motion for adjournment?
I make a motion for adjournment.
Oh, I see.
I'll favor, I'll adjourn. Law and order.